All right, well, let's get started for this evening. Jared, can you move me to the next slide? So we've got an agenda for this evening. We will be hearing from a series of our panelists and our presenters include Pastor Hayne, our CEO with Curry Health Network, Jenny Williams, Dorothy Waite with our Talawa Dany Nation, Dana Drum with Oregon Health Authority, and a joint schools update from our superintendents Marshall Perkins and Milburn. And we'll have a question and answer session of the agenda as well. Next slide, please. So each presenter will have 10 minutes and there will be a moderated Q and A at the end. We'll do our best to answer as many of the questions as we can and we ask for kindness and respect in the space. And if you have any feedback, please email us at info@wildoverscf.org. So, good evening, everyone. You know, good evening, everybody here in Curry County. I'm Michelle Creo and I've had the privilege of growing up in this beautiful place. And I work for Wild Rovers and Hubble Dairy Foundation as the Director of Community Solutions Strategy and Programs. As the leaders that came before me have noticed since the beginning of time, our communities don't always recognize state lines. And this place is connected by our rivers and oceans and ultimately by our people. And I want to take a moment to recognize the place that I'm joining you today from is known as Home Quack by one of the local tribes, Talawa Dany Nation. And that is all you, if you join from your homes, your living rooms this evening, we're each in a place that is the current and ancestral homes of our local tribes. And over this last year and a half, our staff have had a unique position of supporting organizations across Curry, Delmore, Humble, and Trinity County as we have all responded to this pandemic. We are really honored to have the opportunity to work with you with a group of leaders that have come together to organize this town hall tonight. Next slide. So, to be clear about the purpose for this evening, this is about clear, consistent, factual, and inspirational information about COVID-19 and the surge communicated by trusted local leaders. And this agenda was assembled by leaders from multiple jurisdictions, including each of our school districts, cities, counties, state, tribe, and faith leaders who recognized and saw a need for coming together as leaders to express their concern for the state of the pandemic and the community and true emergency we have been experiencing. I want to personally thank Commissioner Boyce, City Manager Janelle Howard, City Manager Jody Fritz, Mayor Tammy Kaufman, School Board members Alan Niderford, Jeremy Skinner, Chairwoman Jerry Lynn Thompson, Director Dorothy Waite, Dana Drum, and all of the staff at OHA, Superintendent Marshall, Perkins, and Milburn, and our business owner and community leader Dan Bratton of Keller Lifeline, our pastor Chris Hayne, staff at All Care and Advanced Health, and the staff on board with Oliver's Community Foundation for their contributions to this virtual town hall. Thank you to our translators, interpreteers that are here tonight to ensure that any and all residents can attend and access the information shared here tonight. It will be recorded and accessible for anybody who'd like to follow up and along with that Spanish translation. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to introduce Pastor Chris Hayne, who is going to share about the remembering for those we have lost.
Thank you, Michelle. Like many of you, you've all experienced to one degree or another the impact of this latest surge. Our church has been going through a deep, time of deep water here. We had some folks who unfortunately passed away. We've had many others who were impacted by this latest surge, including myself. And, but this is reflective of our whole community. And so I just thought we would do to begin things tonight is just take a moment of silence and reflection. In this time of silence, you're free to just pray in your own way if you choose. And just, just take a moment to just be respectful in this time as we, as we come into this really important discussion. Okay. Amen. Thank you, guys, so much. It's a privilege to be part of this great team. And hopefully tonight will be some really good positive footsteps.
Thank you so much, Pastor. With that, I'd like to introduce Jenny Williams with Curry Health Network.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jenny Williams and I am the Chief Executive Officer here at Curry Health Network. I've joined the organization back in May of 2015 and I have to agree with Michelle. It is one of the prettiest places on earth and it is an honor and a privilege to be with you here tonight, sharing, I think, some just basic factual information about the state of affairs that we find ourselves in and plans that we have as a network to continue to serve our community. Next slide, please. My agenda for tonight includes the discussion of universal masking, COVID-19 vaccines and testing, community transmission trends, inpatient and ER statistics that we are seeing, surge plan and surge capacity. We'll talk a little bit about the monoclonal antibody therapies, unvaccinated healthcare workers, and what are the plans that we have to be compliant with the governor and potentially the president's plans to be announced later. Other laws, regulations, and mandates. And then I'll be available for questions at the end of the entire presentation as well. Next slide, please. So, universal masking, all of our patients, visitors, and staff excluding children under the age of five are required to wear a mask or a face covering while in any of our facilities. If you have a medical reason or if you have a disability that does not allow you to wear a mask, we do provide face shields and/or we will get very creative. We have seen people out in the parking lot in their car. We have set up telehealth visits for those that, you know, really can't wear a mask. But we take it very, very seriously and our staff, if you're in our facilities, will ask you to put on a mask if you don't have one on. Next slide, please. COVID-19 vaccines. Next slide. So currently to date, we have administered more than 11,000, close to 12,000 doses. That's actually through September 15th. And you can see the graph kind of shows the real ramp up when vaccines became available in December and what we're seeing now. This does not include doses administering during patient appointments. So this is just through our vaccine clinics. Next slide, please. Our vaccination rates, as you can see statewide, the latest data that we saw was we were averaging about 74.1% for aged 18 and older. But in Curry County, our vaccine rate is hovering about just more than 60% for ages 18 and older. Obviously, there's work to be done and continues to be an important plight for the network to allow people to get vaccinated as soon as they wish. Next slide, please. So this slide is a little bit busy, but wanted to share COVID-19 vaccines at Curry Health Network. We primarily administer the two-dose mRNA Moderna vaccine. And we have had access to Johnson &amp; Johnson, although those have been limited. We do not have the ability to provide vaccines for children under 18 because we do not have access to the Pfizer vaccine, which is the only that's been approved for those children under 18. But I would mention the Pfizer vaccine, if you have children that are eligible and wish to be vaccinated, there are locations here in our county that you can get that. I'm going to just say this many times, call 211 or visit thisvaccines.gov search to find a location to vaccinate your child. The third dose, so we're talking now about booster doses. Currently, there is emergency use authorization for immunocompromised adults. Those guidelines are very clearly spelled out by the FDA and we are able to administer those booster doses for those that have a compromised immune system. We are not currently giving booster doses to the general population and will not be able to do that until the FDA clears those booster doses. So that's, and basically that covers the last step, that booster dose is not yet available for the general population. Next slide, please. So, speaking about testing, we ask that you do not come to the emergency department for a COVID test unless you're seeking emergency medical attention. We found that over the last surge in the previous month or so, we had a lot of patients just coming to the emergency department either because they heard they could get a rapid test there or perhaps other testing areas were flooded and they couldn't get in. But, but every individual that enters the emergency department without seeking emergency care takes resources away from those that are there that need that medical attention. So please do not come to the emergency room just to be tested. Also, do not walk into a clinic for a COVID test, especially if you're symptomatic. Next slide, please. At Curry Health Network, these are the steps that an individual can take to be tested. So we do have a standing order from a physician from the state that allows any person with symptoms or exposure to be tested at Curry Health Network with no need for a visit from a provider. And there are two ways that you can schedule a COVID test at Curry Health Network. You can either go to our website and there's a form that we ask you to fill out and we will call you and make you an appointment, appointment time. We do offer drive-up testing at all three of our locations. Or simply, if you do not have access to the internet, you can just call that phone number 541-412-2000 to schedule a test. Specimens are collected by appointment from the convenience of your vehicle. That really is to prevent people that are not feeling well from coming into our facilities and potentially spreading this lovely virus. To locate other testing center resources throughout the Curry County, call 211. That information is available or you can visit the government website for COVID testing. Next slide, please. We have performed more than 10,000 tests since March and you can see by month how that's fluctuated. In August, it was a tremendous month for us, the most tests that we've ever performed and also the highest positivity rate. Next slide, please. Testing supplies is a, there's a lot of question about these tests. And let me just say that Curry Health Network as a licensed laboratory is required to use what's called a PCR test, not the antigen tests. And PCR tests are considered either rapid or we send them out. And at the network, we have two testing platforms in our lab to perform the rapid PCR tests. But we are still seeing limited supplies for these rapid tests. Now, we have an Abbott machine, which was provided free to us from the state and we have also received cartridges to run the test on that machine. And those result in about 15 minutes. We also have what's called a GeneXpert, which we have available also with limited supplies. We have to purchase those supplies however, and those are processed in about 45 minutes. But in, in August, we'd be, we had to start reserving all of our in-house rapid tests for patients that were considered priorities and those were those that were being admitted to the hospital. They were ER patients that were requiring a transport to another hospital because the receiving hospital wanted to know what their, the status was. And we reserve those for patients that were going to be discharged from our ER going into a congregate setting. So if, if we had an individual that was going to go to the jail, for example, we tested them to make sure that they weren't positive. We continue to monitor supplies and rapid, will continue to use rapid tests for outpatients if the supplies last. But we do have to prioritize these, these limited supplies at this time for healthcare workers frontline and those patients that I mentioned already. The times to receive results for tests are not all, if you don't get a rapid test from us, we do work with a reference lab called Quest and we send our tests to them every day. The turnaround time has been pretty good, two to three days, but they can vary. So just be prepared for that. Next slide, please. So a little talk about community transition cases and death specifically in Curry County, just so you can understand the magnitude. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the case count by week and we're showing you the most recent weeks because that's more relative for our discussion as it would relate to the recent surge. But then cases per 100,000, you can start to see the magnitude of what we're seeing. Although we have small numbers per capita, those are, they are, it's a significant number of people. And then the percent of positive tests that were performed, at the height of this, we were seeing about 20% of all the tests we did were coming back positive. I'm really pleased to say that this week and as of the last couple of weeks, things have settled down a little bit. Next slide, please. Curry County COVID cases and deaths, we've seen 1,661 cases. And that was through the date of September 15th. Our information comes directly off of the Oregon Healthcare website. So, and I know that Oregon Health Authority is going to be presenting a little bit later. If these numbers just slightly vary, it is likely because we pulled different data through different periods of time. But I think you'll find some consistency. But really for our county, that means we're, we had one case for every 14 people in the county. So it's likely that every single one of us has either been touched or knows somebody in the county that has been touched with this pandemic. We've had 17 deaths to date through the 15th of September and that's approximately one death for every 1,349 people in the county. And every single death is too many. Next slide, please. Next slide, inpatient and ER statistics. This slide might look a little bit busy to you, but the top green slide shows you how many patients in that 24-hour period were in our hospital for care. And the red line underneath shows of that total, how many were we treating for COVID at any given time? And you can see that back in late August, we had as many as seven patients hospitalized at once. Now, it's worth mentioning that Curry Health Network is a critical access hospital. We do not take care of, really, we don't take care of ICU patients typically. Our staff are not ICU level trained in our care because in normal working days, we would transfer patients that require ventilation and a higher level of care. However, we did find ourselves taking care of some pretty sick people just a few weeks ago. We never did go over our capacity. So if patients were being transferred out of our facility, it's because we really could not care for their needs. Maybe they were stroke-related patients, maybe they were a COVID patient. I would mention back in, at that time, when neighboring hospitals were also seeing extraordinary capacity issues, transfers definitely were slower than we like to see. Typically, we like a transfer to occur within one hour. That just wasn't possible. So we did have some folks lingering in our ER longer than we have ever seen before. Next slide. Please. This just gives you an idea of our daily count of ER visits. You know, you can see that our average previous eight months was hovering just, just about 32 to 33 patients. But boy, in the end of August, beginning of September, those numbers certainly spiked. We definitely have plans, which I'll get into in a minute, to expand space down. It's particularly the Fifth Street Clinic in Brookings, CMC. So, next slide, please. Next slide. So our surge plan is multifaceted. It's intended to be very agile. The first thing that we have implemented when the surge started was called a labor pool, where each and every one of our employees are required to share with us their availability, whether they're working in which location. And if they're not working, would they be available if we needed them to come in? And so when you find yourselves, you think you have, say, you know, two respiratory therapists scheduled to work, but one of them is out sick, maybe because of COVID. It allows us to go to that labor pool and quickly identify people that we can call in to work. I would say though, that the national labor shortage in healthcare has not made that labor pool robust for us. And we still are dealing with extraordinary labor shortages in our organization. We have been supported by the National Guard. We have 11 guardsmen here. And I'll get into a little bit more of the next slide about that. Our, oh, not, not next slide yet, sorry. Licensed inpatient beds, our normal license allows us to have 18 inpatients. With our surge plan approved by Oregon Health Authority, we can have up to 24 inpatients. You know, obviously in a full-on disaster mode, we're going to, we're going to set up cops and we're going to have a lot more than 24 people in there. But again, that, that rate limiting step for us, our, our staff and the number of people that it takes to care for a swell number of patients. So if we needed to, we could increase our ER capacity. I was mentioning down at CMC, we have gotten approval from Oregon Health Authority to expand the footprint of the existing ER. And we do have providers that are trained and able to assist the primary ER physicians that are working on any given day. But you can see a staff increase of 10 FTEs for 12 hours a day, seven days a week, if we needed to do that. We're seeing, we have plans if we needed to increase our acute care and med surge. We have a scalable negative pressure COVID care area. So on the third floor of our hospital, which is called, we call it Med Surge, we have put up Visqueen walls, if you will, with HEPA filters and fans that create a negative pressure and we can scale that up to 12 beds. So we could continue to run without necessarily surging, if you would, into other areas of the hospital, up to 12 people at a time. But if we go beyond 12 people, we actually have to relocate any non-COVID patients down into our pre-surgery area. We have five private rooms down there. And we also could take three patients in a shared space in our post-op area. And it would allow us then to have all 18 beds up on the third floor available for patient care. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we have the National Guard here. We have 11 guardsmen and they are here to support non-clinical functions. And so many of you may have been, experienced the labor shortage, just, not just healthcare workers, but just in general. And we really needed to bolster our screening so that when you enter our facility, you're met by either one of our screener or guardsmen that would ask you a set of questions to make sure that you're not symptomatic and that we can allow you entry into our facility. They, they'll be with us till at least September 30th. But beyond that, we're in the process of evaluating with Oregon Health Authority what our needs really will be in the coming weeks, now that the surge seems to have passed by our community. Next slide, please. Monoclonal antibodies. Next slide. We do have the ability to provide limited monoclonal antibodies therapies and we've been doing, using those primarily in the ER setting. So for patients that aren't sick enough to be admitted, but definitely have a COVID infection, we are using the intramuscular and IM injection. And then it still requires a patient to remain with us for another hour while we monitor them, make sure they don't have any immediate side effects. We do have plans and the ability to set up a standalone monoclonal antibody clinic if needed. But we just really haven't seen the demand in our county from our providers for an increase in that capacity. We did receive notice that the federal government is working on a more widespread availability of these monoclonal antibodies. But because of the increased demand nationwide, hospitals and providers are no longer able to order the product directly from our distributor. And instead, the government will actually start to allocate certain doses of this, these antibodies to each state and of which we will get in our county. So I think I just read recently the monoclonal antibodies for this week, we were going to get like 1,400 doses for the state. There are delays in shipment and we're going to learn a lot more in the coming weeks about how to best make these more available if the demand is there. Next slide, please. Unvaccinated healthcare workers and other mandates. Next slide, please. The state regulations as effective October 18th require that all of our healthcare workers be fully vaccinated or have an exception filed with us. Full vaccine means that they would, that their full vaccination status occurs 14 days after the date of the final dose that a vaccine is received. We are accepting and taking medical and religious exceptions per the state regulations. Any healthcare worker not fully vaccinated or with an exception on file by October 18th will be placed on an unpaid administrative leave. And I hope you realize Curry Health Network must follow these laws, rules, and regulations. There is no choice in this. Next slide, please. Proposed federal regulations from the president, maybe last week or the week before, they have not been finalized yet, but he stated they could include mandatory vaccinations or weekly testing for negative, for unvaccinated employees with any employee in the country with more than 100 employees. So currently, you may remember the governor initially had a stipulation that if you had an exception on file, you were going to have to be tested. That, that was removed because the larger healthcare systems and even us, that the burden to test these folks every week is very costly. And we all realized we needed our healthcare workers focused on patients and not testing asymptomatic people. The mandatory vaccine for over 17 million healthcare workers at Medicaid and Medicare, participating hospitals and other settings. So that's going to be, there is an interim final rule already from CMS that will be issued in October. But without that final rule, there's just too much unknown. We are going to follow the Oregon statutes until such time. If the fed, federal statutes come out to be more restrictive, we will follow those guidelines as well. Oregon, OSHA regulations have been periodically updated and this medical relief benefit rule effective on 9/16 requires healthcare facilities to cover the cost of a healthcare worker that is out on a quarantine for up to two weeks at a minimum. And so we will be following that regulation as well. Next slide, please. We're going to address questions at the end of this and so I'm going to turn this back over to Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I really appreciate the depth of information that you're able to provide and look forward to be able to address some of those questions at the end of the conversation tonight. So with that, let's go to the next slide. I'd like to introduce our director with the Community and Family Services, Dorothy Waite. Dorothy, can you check your volume one more time? Give us just a minute. We had sound checks earlier today that were working great. So while we're waiting, Jenny, would you mind, there was one question that came up in the chat, which is hopefully a pretty straightforward yes or no question. Just, is Curry Health Network, is the triage line still available?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, while we're getting the technical pieces worked out for Dorothy, we do have some other panelists on the line. So if we can go ahead and shift over to talk with Dana Drum with Oregon Health Authority.
Good evening. Michelle, are you able to hear me? Great. And then I might need to go to my slides, though. All right. I'm Dana Drum. I'm the Strategic Partnerships Lead in the Oregon Health Authority. I am the lead for the Office of State Public Health Director on the Curry County Transition. I also want to introduce Dr. Tom Jean, who is on, he'll be responding to some of the more clinical, technical questions. He's our Deputy State Health Officer. So he is one of the public health officers. So he is one of the public health officers in addition to Dr. Dean Seidlinger, who is the State Health Officer who provides direction related to public health in Curry County. Next slide, please. So just to give you a snapshot, I'll do this quickly because Jenny did a great job providing an overview. These data are current as of Friday, so a couple of days later than, than what she had. So that's why there is a difference in numbers. So and as she mentioned, there have been seventeen deaths, one thousand six hundred and sixty-one cases, two hundred and twenty-seven total pediatric cases, so cases and individuals under eighteen years of age, and sixty-two Curry County residents have been hospitalized. And this is from the start of the pandemic. Next. So here you can see cases by hospitalization status over time, going back to the pandemic. You can see kind of the orange is, are those that were not hospitalized. There are a number of individuals that we just don't know if they were hospitalized or not. We may not have been able to, they may not have been reached during the case investigation process, so we don't have that. But you can, in general, just see kind of the impact of the, the latest surge with the Delta variant from kind of mid-July on to September, early September in, in Curry County. Next slide. Here are the vaccination rates for the county. To date, sixty point seven percent of adults, so anyone over age eighteen have, in the county, have received at least one COVID vaccine. Fifty-two point two percent have had the full series. So if they received Pfizer or we, or Moderna vaccine, you have to have two in order to complete the series and be fully vaccinated. J and J remains a single-dose vaccine. Next slide. So we wanted to kind of just go over what to expect if you are, are diagnosed with COVID nineteen and you have positive test that's been handled through a lab or a healthcare provider. So what will happen is we get those electronic lab results because we are the public health authority now for Curry County, because the Board of Commissioners transferred that authority to the state earlier this year. We have a team of case investigators who will call, make attempts to call each person who we are notified that's positive, again, through those lab reports. And they'll be working, talking with you to give you information about what you need to do to isolate so that you don't share the virus with others, and also help you think through kind of who else would you maybe been around for fifteen minutes or more within six or feet and might have exposed to COVID while you were contagious. That way, then those folks can be followed up with by our contact tracers to let them know that they've been exposed and need to quarantine. So there'll be information about kind of what you need to do to isolate safely. And also, we'll check in with you to make sure that you have what you need in order to isolate safely. So if you need things like food or lodging, you aren't able to safely isolate in the home because you might expose others who are immunocompromised, and the home isn't set up in a way that it's conducive to that kind of isolation. We will refer, provide your information with your permission to one of the community-based organizations we work with in Curry County to help provide those isolation supports. So the most important thing is to please answer your phone if you have a positive test so that we can work with you, make sure that you have what you need, and have the information you need as well. Next slide. So these are the OHA-funded, community-based organizations in Curry County that we are working with. Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, Curry County Homeless Coalition, and St. Timothy's Episcopal Church. They are all helping to provide those wraparound support services, not only for persons who are COVID-positive and need those supports for isolation, but also those individuals that we're aware of that have been exposed and need to quarantine for a period of time and need supports to be able to do that as well. They also are doing some general COVID-related outreach and engagement activities, and some of them have also been involved in vaccination efforts. Next slide. So there are some testing opportunities in Curry County. These are the ones that we're most aware of, but definitely check with your healthcare provider if you have one. OHA has a weekly testing event at the Event Center on the beach from eleven to four. No appointment is needed. That's in Gold Beach. So you can just show up during that time. Same with St. Timothy's Episcopal Church in Brookings. There, they are Monday through Saturday from twelve to three. No appointment is required. And Coast Community Health Center at their Port Orford site, our clinic also has testing from Monday through Friday from eight to four thirty. No appointment required. And then you already heard Jenny talk about the testing available at Curry Health Network as well. Next slide. In addition, we know that the Brookings VA Clinic has testing available. This is just some additional information, as well as Curry Medical Center, which we've already talked about. Next slide. And Curry Family Medical, Curry Medical Practice. So and if you go to this link at this website at the bottom of this, of the slide, you can go and find testing sites in the community, in the county as well. Next. So in terms of vaccination, there are a number of ways to get vaccinated in Curry County. First, if you have a primary care provider, check with them. You can also go to Get Vaccinated Oregon, that website, or the CDC Vaccine Finder, or 211 to find out about where you can get vaccinated. Pharmacies also tend to have, particularly the chain pharmacies are also providing vaccination. And those, those will also show up on these websites. So we encourage you, if you're not vaccinated, go to one of these places to, to get more information about where you can get vaccinated. And then also, we have some information here about places where you can get more information. 211 is a great resource and they can help direct you to, to other information if that's the easiest accessible way for you. Next. Next slide. These are all of the healthcare providers that are enrolled with the state to provide COVID vaccine. They may not all be, you know, they may not do it all by walk-in, and we certainly want folks to, to, to check ahead of time. But this is a list of all the providers in Curry County that are registered or enrolled with us as providing COVID vaccine. Next. We do have a vaccination event that happens on, I believe it's on Wednesdays, at part of that eleven to four testing. You also could get vaccinated during that time, and we have all three vaccines available. This, again, is at the Event Center on the beach in Gold Beach, and we do have all three. So that means that kids under, or kids under eighteen are able to get vaccinated there. And then here is the website for Get Vaccinated Oregon. Next. We wanted to just show you a few of the ads that we've been running in Curry County, particularly related to Delta. So you may be seeing these on social media. You might see them in the newspaper, and you can go on to the next slide. But some of these may be familiar to you, and we just wanted you to, to be aware that these, look for these. They'll also help direct you to where you can get vaccination information. And I believe that is the end of my slides. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dana. All right. Well, we've got Dorothy back on the line. We're gonna go and backtrack to Talawa-Dani for an update from China. Okay, so it looks like we're still having some audio issues, Dorothy. We're gonna go ahead and have the schools do their presentation, and we'll work with you in the messages on seeing if we can call in for your audio.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay. Hi, this is Superintendent Dave Marshall with the Brookings Harbor School District. And we have, and I'm not sure if they were able to make this meeting and be on the call, so if you are here, just let me know. Eric Milburn, Central Curry Superintendent, and Steve Perkins, Port Orford, Langue Voice Superintendent.
David, I'm here.
Oh, great. Thank you. So feel free to jump in on any of the slides, Steve. So we represent all three school districts in Curry County. So next slide, please. And next slide. So we are operating under the Ready School Safe Learner Resiliency Framework, which is, it's, it's the guide for all schools in Oregon, and it lists their requirements and recommendations for school operations and the things that schools have to do in order to be operated, considerations for COVID. I think some pictures didn't come through. Next slide, please. So, and all of this is in support at the state level, all the way from the governor, legislature, all of our school boards, school leaders, as well as staff and students and families, is our major goal this year is to have our students in school receiving in-person instruction. Last year was a very challenging year with significant periods of time throughout Oregon, Curry County included, where those, our students were learning remotely. We certainly grew a lot and learned a lot about how to do that well. But another learning experience from that was that the best place is to have kids in school. And our learning experience from last year is that we can do that with the precautions in place comparatively safely. Next slide, please. Is there another slide? Okay, like that. Yeah. So parts of the session, it didn't come through. So with the requirements or the resiliency plan, there are actually only a handful of requirements that are mandated throughout the state for all schools. One of them is that all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear masks. And that they have a medical exemption, they can wear a face shield. So that is, that is statewide and including our three school districts as well. That requirement was in place last year, and it continues to be in place this year. Second requirement is that if a student or staff member is not fully vaccinated and they have close contact with persons who tested positive for COVID, then they will need to quarantine or isolate. And so all of our school districts, we work very closely with OHA. And want to thank Dana, has been great to work with this, this school year and working with them on the quarantine and isolation decisions. And so each of our school districts this year has had numerous staff, as well as students that who have been quarantined and isolated. It's just gonna be a part of our landscape for the foreseeable future, likely this school year. With that, and similar with healthcare providers, I believe that if a person, a student or a staff member is fully vaccinated and they are not symptomatic and don't test positive for COVID, but have had close contact, they do not have to quarantine. And that's probably the single biggest thing that will help us keep in operation. So at this point in time, all three county school districts are, well, actually, caveat with that, I'll let Steve talk for a moment about him, but we have been, school started with all the schools. And for the most part, schools have been full-time in person while we continue to work with the challenge of quarantining students and and dealing with that potential impact on our staffing. So Steve, did you want to talk for a moment about your, with Pacific High School?
Situation? Yeah, sure, sure. So I, I got the duty of working with Dana today for quite a long time. We have, we had a volleyball team that was quarantined on Monday due to a positive test and all, all close contacts. So that group was quarantined. Today, we had a staff member that tested positive this morning. And then we had several kids not come to school today. So we're, we only have ninety-four students at the high school, which is seven through twelve, but we had twenty-nine absent. So knowing that, and with the situation that we had, I opted to go ahead and close our high school, which is the seven through twelve building for the next two days so that we could go in and sanitize and clean appropriately, and we will all return on Monday, excluding those that are actually quarantined at this point. So we'll, we'll move forward, but this is very, really is very highly precautionary. But I, you know, we have, we obviously have COVID in Port Orford, and I think we have. So we're just, we're doing this to make sure that we have everything pretty much taken care of, safety for students and staff for Monday.
Thank you, Steve. And
If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Sorry, go ahead.
I said, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
And I think they'll also have questions at the end. So in addition to those require, all of the, the final requirement is, as was mentioned earlier with healthcare professionals, is that all education staff is required to be fully vaccinated by October eighteenth. Similar to with healthcare, is there is a process that individuals can request a medical exception and/or a religious exception to the vaccine requirement. But that is, we have to have all of that finalized and processed by October eighteenth, which we're all on track to do. In addition to the requirements, there's quite a few recommendations that we're all doing in practice, such as additional cleaning and sanitizing, and including the measure, if warranted, of potentially considering shutting things down and doing a really thorough sanitizing and cleaning. We've all increased our, our hand hygiene for both staff and students with sanitizers in multiple locations and as well as just ensuring that particularly the kids are frequently washing and or sanitizing their, their hands. We, we have available testing, rapid testing for symptomatic staff or students. It's voluntary. And so, but as, as I understand it, not being a healthcare professional, that those tests are most accurate if a person is symptomatic. So typically, what we would see, if someone starts to feel poorly during the day, we would administer one of those tests to help determine whether or not the symptoms are likely COVID or not. One of the big things that I know that it sounds like Steve's experiencing, and I know that we're experiencing in Brookings, is at the moment, we have a pretty significant uptick in illness that's not COVID-related. Or at least it doesn't appear to be at this point in time. So we have a significant number of students who are out and staying home, and based on all of our checking, that at this moment, it doesn't appear that it's COVID-related for those who have received tests. So the positive piece of that is our community is really stepping up, and if, if a student is ill or symptomatic, that they're not sending them to school. And that's one of the biggest things that can help keep us in operation. We're all working with trying to have as much distancing with the students, between the students and staff as possible. But that is also, that's an ongoing challenge, and there's really no way to be perfect at that, kids being kids. But we build that into our schedules, reduce pressure points such as meals and that sort of thing to increase as much as we can the distancing to help use that as a preventative measure. I think that is about all of the main highlights. I think our own ongoing challenge for this school year and has impacted some districts in the region already is if, if there's enough staff and or students that are out quarantined or isolated, it can impact our ability to operate. And that's one thing that districts are struggling with, and that will hopefully be reduced with the, with the vaccine requirement. Should reduce the number of staff needing to be quarantined, but that does present ongoing challenges that, that we're all wrestling with. that does present ongoing challenges that that we're all wrestling with. So be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that update from the schools. Um, and yes, we'll definitely be going back in to talk through the question and answer portion coming up soon. So with that, we've been working on getting Dorothy signed back in as a panelist and not as an interpreter. Uh, so if Dorothy, do you want to give this one more try?
Nothing?
I can hear you.
Very good. Okay. The tribe in this meeting is really important and I'm really happy to relay information regarding tribal operations. Um, as you can see on one of the slides, we unfortunately had to close some of our revenue producing operations.
Sorry to interrupt. This is Spanish interpreter. Interpreters were bumped out of channel.
Thank you. We'll make sure that that gets, um, they get looped back in. Dorothy, go ahead and we've got your slides up and we're ready to go.
Okay. So early on, um, you know, just like you were hearing others, uh, we had to take a step back and figure out how we were going to proceed without causing staff or our clientele guests any danger. So when the tribe initially received CARES Act funding, um, and this is on the next slide. We took the majority of, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see those online. There we go. Anyway, we took the majority of the funding and split it between facility improvements that could help our staff be safer. And the other part was sent on direct services to both staff and our tribal citizens. For reference, we have one thousand eight hundred ninety-eight tribal citizens and about half of those live in our Curry and Delmar County areas. So over nine hundred citizens are living in this area and we were able to assist them all with the CARES Act funding and that, I believe, is exactly what you know, the federal government intended for us to do. This chart that we're looking at is a graph of the employees who have been exposed out of the office under quarantine. And I'm very happy to show everyone that our trends are looking very much like the rest of Curry and Delmar County. We had a spike and then a gradual dropping off of folks who were either ill with COVID or were quarantined because of exposure. Early on, the middle of August, that was our high peak and where we had fifty, fifty-two of our employees out during that week. Next slide. So in our efforts to address the negative impacts that COVID has in our community, we received some federal assistance to provide support with rent and utilities. So in Curry County, twelve households received that assistance and that ended up being a payment to utilities and landlords of nearly sixty, sixty thousand dollars, so eight thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. The tribe also updated two of our housing units that were vacant to serve as isolation shelters for Toluas citizens and their families, either who were ill with COVID or who had someone in their household ill and they needed to be removed from that household. One of the things that we found out early on is that many of us were in shared office spaces. So we policies to reduce the amount, number of people that are working in the office at any one time and began construction of a new government office. And some of you may have seen that on the highway. That will be our new government campus and it is designed to be expandable for future staffing needs. Um, one of the very things that we did, early things that we did was the use of an online survey to get responses from our citizenship on what their exact needs were, so that we were able to respond more directly to their needs rather than throwing out a blanket response. We were able to individualize those needs for the tribal citizens. Next slide. So within the community and family services department, we have several streams of funding. One of those is TANF Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. We had amended our plan to provide emergency assistance to qualifying families. That was, I have to give credit to our tribal council. They were very quick to move on that. But our plan approved, sent into the Health and Human Services and was approved and we were able to provide many families some support through our TANF program. We also received a pandemic emergency assistance fund allocation from Health and Human Services. And that fund was distributed to a hundred and twenty qualifying individuals this year earlier. So for reference, our TANF program is available to members of federally federally recognized tribes in our Oregon service area that includes Coos, Curry and Josephine Counties. We were also very fortunate to receive substantial SAMSA funds, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Act funds for COVID substance abuse and mental health services. To date, we have served about a hundred and fifty adults and children through that program. And those services are available to members of federally recognized tribes and any healthcare worker. Mental health is something that we all need to talk about. It should not be silenced and I know that our medical staff are certainly overworked right now and so please contact us at seven oh seven four eight seven nine two five five and inquire about services that you may want. We also have received some childcare and development funds, CCDO, uh, American Recovery Funds to increase childcare capacity. We were talking earlier about workforce and the challenges of, you know, keeping staff on the job site and one of those challenges is childcare. So the funding that we've received is targeted at creating capacity, improving, increasing current capacity, getting new centers open. And we're targeting new partners that we haven't traditionally worked with before, so or I'm hoping to get some great partners out of Houston Curry County and moving forward with increasing our childcare capacity. The tribe is also fortunate enough to have robust funding for victims of crime. And one of those things that we offer is a survivor's transitional housing unit, which will bridge the gap between leaving and being in a safe place and being independent and living in your own housing unit. So traditionally that stay in the survivor's transitional unit was short and we were able to increase that using some of our pandemic funds. Um, and that, I believe, it concludes my slides. But while we were talking, I also noted that were a few other things that we took to mitigate the effects of COVID on our population. We have worked with the United Indian Health Services here in Smith River to extend their testing and vaccination services to all of our staff, native or non-native. And I think that that was a big, big help for our community. And one of the things anecdotally that I wanted to report was that we have zero instances of staff to staff virus communication. So as much as it's been kind of a hardship on some of us, our strict protocols are, you know, very much working. The other thing that we did was our senior meal center went strictly to home delivery for their meals. And then in those offices where we had to have shared space, um, there have been the air cleaner filters installed in all of those offices. And that also is using some of that CARES Act funding. Um, so I'm sure, you know, a lot, I'll show this with everyone that we're all looking forward to where we can return to our previous way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Appreciate that information and really it's so great to hear, uh, you share what's working, right, with slowing the spread as well. So with that, it really opens us back up to the question and answer portion of our agenda this evening. And so the first question that we really wanted to dig into here was for Dr. Jean. So I'll wait for Dr. Jean to join on here. As we've heard about our schools, what's the rate of transmission at our childcare centers?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um, and it's great to be here. So it's a good question about childcare centers. Um, they are certainly an area, just like schools and some other places where you have a lot of people in a you know, to who are congregating together on a regular basis. Every week, we publish a list of outbreaks in various settings and that includes schools and it also includes childcare. Um, and we just updated that today. It comes out every Wednesday. So any suspected childcare outbreak in the state of Oregon is required to be reported to the local public health. And local public health departments and tribal partners work to investigate and identify outbreaks. Um, and so we update that list of outbreaks every week and in the case of childcare, uh, what we list is childcare is whose student capacity or child capacity is sixteen or more. Um, now in terms of the rate, uh, we don't actually have a rate for for transmission childcare centers because uh, we would need a denominator. We'd need to know exactly how many kids are in childcare and that's a pretty fluid number. However, we do have a rate for children, uh, generally children ages five and younger. And that rate has been pretty steady lately at about a hundred and eighty-six per a hundred thousand people. And and that's recent late August, September numbers. Now, I think a little more interesting and probably what people want to know is how many, how many outbreaks do we have in childcare? So in the past three weeks, we've seen a slight increase in daycare or childcare outbreaks. Two weeks ago, we were at nine statewide. Uh, last week we were at thirteen and this week we're at fifteen. So there's a little bit of a trend there. We're keeping a close eye on it. Um, and then in terms of Curry County specifically, there's currently one active childcare outbreak. But in that particular outbreak, there has not been a new case since September tenth. So we're hopeful that that one is actually over, but we, we list all outbreaks as active, I think, for about four weeks until four weeks from the onset. So I hope that answers that question. Um, you know, childcare, kind of like schools, is a place where there is a risk of transmission, but they're also structured places, structured settings and there are a lot of prevention measures that that are important that can really help to prevent spread.
Thank you so much and really glad to hear that that's, that is something being tracked and there's information on it and appreciate the explanation um, on how we can understand those numbers. So to follow up with that, um, you know, there's been a little bit of confusion around, you know, when folks are vaccinated versus not what happens when you have a close contact. And so the question was really around, why do vaccinated people in close contact to a positive case not need to quarantine or maybe not as long? So could you provide some clarity around vaccinated people and exposure to positive cases?
Sure, it's a great question. Um, and there's been a lot made in the media of of the the fact that somebody who's vaccinated could possibly transmit COVID and we have seen some, some cases of that around the world. But it's generally pretty rare. It's not, it's not a super common thing. And there's really abundant scientific evidence that shows that fully vaccinated people develop a very strong immune response. Um, these vaccines are really good. To be honest, they're better than than we thought last year, any vaccine for COVID was going to be. Their effectiveness and that that includes the the Delta variant. They're still quite effective against what's circulating right now. So the risk is really low enough that that public health experts agree that vaccinated people don't need to quarantine. Um, and so really that's one of the benefits to vaccination that directs directly affects individuals.
Thank you so much. So this next set of questions is really directed to our school superintendents. So, you know, Superintendent Marshall and Perkins, you you mentioned some of the rates and transmission that's been going on, but can you speak a little more to the rate of transmission at our schools this year? And our, you know, and a follow-up to that for, from our parents is a little bit more about when should we get our kids tested?
Uh, speaking for Brookings, um, in terms of transmission within school, uh, over last year, there was essentially little to no transmission within school. And the vast majority of what we were dealing with were needing to deal with cases that were coming from outside, like a family exposure and the student came in prior to knowing that the person was positive. This year, uh, there's some indications of a potential transmission within the school setting, but that doesn't presently seem to be the the biggest issue there. Uh, I'm not sure what they're seeing in the other districts, but in general, and what the state is reporting uh, at our statewide meetings is transmission within the school, student to student, staff to staff uh, has been typically very low. We did expect a little bit of an increase this year just because we're back to school as normal, meaning the kids are in school all day with full classes, whereas last year, a typical scenario in Oregon was half of the students in the morning and half in the afternoon or an alternating schedule. So, uh, again, we're not seeing huge volumes. The most recent data for, I'm looking now at the report that OHA just sent out is, uh, we do have a handful of cases. Uh, let's see, it's one student, one staff at our middle school and one student, one staff at the elementary school and two students at the high school currently have tested positive. But there's, I think, one of those instances, there's a question mark, but it's not conclusive whether it was transmitted within the setting because of the additional measures. Uh, in terms of when, when to test is, uh, and I believe we have some information on our website and we're working on a countywide FAQ to support that as well is specifically considering a test is when we're seeing COVID symptoms. So with challenges with respiratory issues, fevers and combinations of that. Uh, and that, um, we do have the capacity to test to a certain extent, uh, if there is that, but again, more our tests are more designed where the student or staff member starts feeling ill during the day that we can offer that as an option. Uh, but there have been certain instances where folks have requested and we come out to the parking lot and administer that test. But really the safest thing is if you're at all questioning, have your child stay home. That's really gonna help both your child and the inadvertent spread of the virus within the school. Um, and just not only COVID, but just virus in general. That certainly raised the awareness uh, of all of the the communicable viruses and the seasonal flu. Uh, and that was one of the things that our districts experienced last year was next to no flu season because of certainly fewer kids in school at a given time, but also all the preventative measures, including masks. So we, while we are seeing some non-COVID illnesses, they seem to be at a much lower level than we've seen historically because of the additional measures.
Thank you so much. So what I'm hearing is, you know, when in doubt, keep them home.
Absolutely. That's probably the single biggest thing. If there's, if there's a question, keep them home and then, you know, certainly if they don't develop a fever, uh, and they're feeling comfortable and they can always call the school. Uh, we do have a school nurse available. And so they can call the school in Brookings. And, uh, and I believe with the OHA numbers, just to to ask of like, well, what should we do and does this warrant testing or further concern with your kid? Cause obviously understanding as a parent myself is that's one of your number one priorities is, is my kid well and what is the best decision for my child?
Thank you, Superintendent Marshall. Um, Superintendent Perkins, do you have anything to add to that response or and I also have another follow-up question that can ask you as well.
Not a lot. I have, I have laboratory treatment that's gonna start barking here shortly, so. But, um, no, um, I I think, you know, David and I are in the same, on the same boat, you know, we have, uh, had a positive. had a positive staff member today. We had a positive high school child or kid on Monday. And so, you know, and we had a positive at the high school or the grade school, you know, in the, in the beginning. And we, we actually had, we didn't have Kinder for the first two weeks because our, our kindergarten teacher was positive COVID. So we, we stalled our, our kindergarten for the first two weeks. So, so we, you know, it, but not a lot. But again, in a small school, not a lot means it, it, it can, it can take care of a lot of kids and put them in quarantine. So.
Thank you. And I think many of us on these Zoom calls understand dogs in the background.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, okay, so, you know, one of the follow up questions and some of the families had was really around quarantine. So what happens, right? There's an exposure at the school, one of their classmates is positive. And how many days do they have to be quarantined? What, what's the process when they have to go home?
So I'll, I'll start with that. And just, just in general, referring to that, one of the challenges that we're all working with in schools is finding the balance with some sense of normalcy as well as doing as much of the precautions as we can. So that again, with the goal of having kids in person learning. So with with quarantining, and again, unfortunately, it's something that we've had a lot of practice with over last school year as well. So what a typical situation is that we're able to do, and I know a lot of districts are, is it deals with proximity to the confirmed case. And so there is an exception in the OHA rules, typically at six feet. But because somebody mentioned earlier, schools are much more controlled environments and we can ensure high levels of mask wearing and those sorts of things that OHA has stated that for, while kids are in school, that distance is three feet. So what that means is that with things that we're putting in place, such as requiring seating charts and those sorts of things, that if there is an exposure in a classroom, typically that will require the adjacent students who sat near that student to be quarantined, but not the entire class. Now, working with OHA, if, if neither of us are confident in the information, then we would err on the side of caution and quarantine the whole class. And in fact, we also had with our pre-K program or our early summer program, we had an issue with that and there was a positive case and they hadn't yet gotten, this or before kindergarten started, they had not yet had seating charts. So we weren't confident in the contact and so we just ended up doing the whole class. But more typically during the school year, it's a couple of students adjacent to, to that student and not the whole class. And then we all have different measures in place to help support that student continuing to get their work, continuing to have opportunities to learn while they are at home. And a lot of us got pretty good with the, with the online piece and supports with that as well.
Thank you. Again, Superintendent Perkins, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, and, 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 you know, the biggest issue now is when, when you go to, like, you know, for example, we, we went to, we're, we're closing the high school for, for tomorrow and Friday. Just not time to go to, to go to a CDL so that you could actually give or disseminate the education out to the kids. So we basically just closed down. But, you know, we, we have in an agreement with it, with our unions, that if, if we were to go out for an extended period of time, that we would give those teachers and educators two days to prepare to go, to go to what we would call a, a CDL. So, yeah, no, it's, it's the same thing, you know, with David and, and, you know, hopefully, it's, it's, you know, we, we know it's going to be an off and on situation. But we're hoping that it's more off than on and that we can keep the kids in school as much as possible.
Thank you. Yes, I've heard that loud and clear that, you know, the emphasis is really on keeping our kids in school and everything we can do to keep them safe as we do that. So, you know, with, oh, go ahead.
Oh, as I say, we, we all do have to, as part of the Ready School Safe Learners, have to have those contingency plans of what happens and at what levels, whether it's outbreak or probably more common, at least for the short term, is just not enough staff to run things. And in fact, to the north of us in Reedport ran into that where it wasn't about illness, it was they had enough teachers out in quarantine where they couldn't run class, so they had to shift to distance learning for a period of time. And typically, the hope is like Steve said, is it's a short duration. Like two to four weeks is, is the target and not long term like the experience last year. So hopefully, we will need to use those plans, but we certainly are working on those contingency plans.
Good to know those back at a certain place. Thank you. All right. Well, this next question is to Jenny in Curry Health Network. So, hello. So the question is, do I have to have symptoms to get a test at one of your clinics?
We are required to have a physician's order and in order to demonstrate medical necessity, an individual either needs to be symptomatic and or needs to have had close contact exposure with another individual. We have a questionnaire online that asks those basic questions. If you answer yes, you will be tested.
Thank you. So to follow up on that, who pays for the COVID tests? Where does that funding come from?
Yep. So private insurance companies do pay for some of the COVID tests. You know, we are able to bill a small fee for that. If an individual has no insurance, the government, we can bill the government for those individuals. So if you need to be tested, you will not receive or be required to pay any portion of any bill that is generated from that test. It is free of charge to the public.
That's really great information. So, you know, to follow up on the, who pays for medical care in more severe cases where the hospitalization might be required?
Well, that is a much larger bill. And we do bill, again, private insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, and they are currently paying for COVID hospitalizations and care. I think there will be a much larger discussion here coming up very quickly about the cost of COVID on our healthcare systems. And so for now, that's who is, is paying. And again, if you are hospitalized and do not have any insurance, we then turn around and we do bill the government for that stay as well.
Thank you. That's really helpful to understand that and we'll look forward to hearing more information about how that comes out and impacts our medical community. So, you know, this next one's really back to our public health team. I'll wait a sec for Dana and Dr. Jean. So if I've had COVID, do I need to get vaccinated? Can I still be a carrier? Do I need to wear a mask?
All right, I'm going to turn that one over to Tom.
Yeah, great, great question. So, yes, our, our answer is absolutely you should be vaccinated, vaccinated regardless of whether you've already had COVID-19. And, and the simple reason is even though there is some evidence of natural immunity from infection, it's just not as clear and there's a lot more variability. So if you had a mild infection, for example, we don't know that you would have very good immunity. And so, and we also don't know how long that immunity lasts. And we do know that vaccines have been really well studied and we have a much clearer picture for how good that immunity is, very good, and how long it lasts. And then, you know, there are studies out there that actually looked at compared to, compared to two groups of people, people who are unvaccinated but had had COVID and then people who've been fully vaccinated. And those who are unvaccinated with a prior infection were more than twice as likely than the fully vaccinated people to get a reinfection with COVID. So we absolutely do recommend vaccination for, for everybody who's eligible, including those who've had COVID. And then at this point in the state, the mask requirements are for everybody in, in indoor places and then in certain outdoor places as well, and of course, in schools. So that doesn't change whether you've had COVID or whether you're vaccinated.
Thank you. That is really helpful. So, you know, part of, part of getting vaccinations, now there's all this talk about booster shots. Can you share a little bit about how those booster shots work and maybe which brands are okayed for boosters? And how long after our initial vaccinations should boosters be administered? Who can get them right now?
Yep, it's a little bit complicated. And I guess the first thing I would say is we want to distinguish between the boosters and then the, what we call the third shot or the additional dose, which has already been approved. That was weeks, I think, at least a month ago for a very specific group of people, and that's people who have compromised immune systems. So that's people who are on cancer treatment or who people have autoimmune diseases, for example, or people on high dose steroids. So those people are already approved to get a third dose. We don't consider that a booster. That's really just because their immune systems are weaker and they need three doses to get to that same adequate level of immunity in the first place. Now, the, the big question everybody wants to know is about boosters. And what happened last week is the FDA Advisory Committee recommended that people aged sixty-five and older as well as those people who are at high risk for severe illness receive a booster dose. And this is for the Pfizer vaccine only. And that would be at least six months after your second dose. Just today, breaking news, the FDA issued emergency use authorization for those people. So again, people over sixty-five, people who are at high risk of becoming severely ill and also people who are at risk due to frequent exposure from their jobs. Now, we're not quite to the point, it's going to be another day or two before we can actually officially recommend that because the CDC's Advisory Committee is still meeting and the CDC recommendation will hopefully be coming in a matter of days here. And the CDC will also provide some more specific recommendations as to whether, you know, what groups might be included in that high risk of exposure, whether that includes healthcare workers or potentially school staff. So we'll have to wait and see. And OHA will most likely follow CDC because they have the, the evidence and, and we want to align with them. So there's currently no official boosters available to Oregonians, but that should change very shortly. And the CDC decision is likely to be pretty similar to what the FDA just authorized, but it might again, have more detail or, or might be a little more limited. And then the last thing I'll say is for people who did not receive Pfizer, people who got the Moderna vaccine or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, the booster dose for those is probably coming too, but it's going to be a little bit, little bit farther in the future. So I don't have any specifics on those.
So for the folks that, you know, they're immunocompromised and looking for that third dose, do you have to show proof or what's, how, how do I go about saying I need the third dose?
Yeah, that's something you should be working with your, your healthcare provider. There, I'm sure you're going to help your provider if you've got a compromised immune system in most cases. And they, they can work with you to, to get that process taken care of.
Thank you so much. So this next question is really, you know, for Oregon Health Authority as well as the hospital. But what information is needed or not for getting a test?
Yeah, so generally, I mean, you shouldn't need to provide a social security number or an ID. However, you know, it's possible that some, some providers that do testing, they'll need some of that information in order to bill insurance, if you have it, and also to be able to kind of work with you electronically. So many, many providers now are using electronic health records and electronic messaging to, to communicate with with patients. So I would say that at the, the OHA sites and the, the free community testing sites that we do and in Gold Beach, and then I also believe at St. Timothy's and Brookings, that you would not need to provide a social security number or an ID for, for, to get tested there. So and then I, I, and I do believe that Curry Health Network does ask for that information so that you can, they can, they can get you enrolled in the electronic health record. But I defer to Jenny. I'm not sure. I think there are other ways you can get tested. You just maybe don't have the same access.
Can you hear me? This is Jenny. You know, I asked that very question too. At first, I thought it was a requirement that Oregon Health Authority had when we register folks for their vaccine. But in order to be tested, I do believe we collect the social security numbers during our registration process for all patients. It's just another patient identifier if we need it for insurance purposes. We do not use that information. We do not share that information. That is just part of our data gathering as part of our normal registration process.
Thank you so much. And, you know, I want to really acknowledge that we've gotten a lot more comments as we've been live this evening and, you know, the hopes of, of this group and pulling the session together is really to be able to continue to answer these questions and continue this conversation in the community. So, you know, even if we're not able to answer a question tonight, we are going to make sure that all the panelists here have access to those questions and we'll be looking at ways to get that back out into the community and answer the questions as best we can. So I think for the final kind of question for tonight, you know, as more access to testing options has opened up and we can purchase rapid tests at the drugstore, how are those numbers tracked if you take an at-home test and get a positive result? Do you recommend going to the clinic then and getting retested?
Yeah, it's, it's certainly great that we have more options now. The FDA has approved more than three hundred COVID-19 tests at this point. And, or actually over four hundred, I'm sorry. So a lot of those are laboratory tests. A lot of those are meant for the healthcare setting, but there are now quite a few that are approved for home use. And so for, for an at-home test, like a truly at-home test, you basically collect the sample and you could get a, a pretty instant result. There are also those tests where there's at-home collection where you would do a swab or spit and then you would mail that off and get the results. In both of those cases, the manufacturer, well, in the second case, the manufacturer, in the first case, we, we, we wouldn't get the result from you either. We, we don't get any kind of electronic official result. So we're not currently tracking those for that reason. Now, what our recommendation is, it's certainly fine to go ahead and use those tests. They're generally not quite as, quite as accurate or as sensitive as a PCR test that you would get from a healthcare provider. But most of them are pretty good. So if you do go ahead and use those and you test positive, we recommend that you contact your healthcare provider and they can, they can help you out determine whether you have, you know, symptoms that, that would require further evaluation. And I'd also recommend that you refer to our, OHA has a document that has a lot of information about what to do after you get tested. And we can, we can share that link if we haven't already. It's just called After You Get Tested. And it has information on what to do with a positive result, isolation details, quarantine details, how to notify contacts, people you may have exposed and other recommended steps to protect yourself and to protect the others around you.
Yeah, and I think we just want to reiterate that if you have a positive test, you know, you need to make sure you're isolating for the, for the isolation period and not exposing others.
Right. It would be a ten day isolation, ten days from your first symptom. Or if you didn't have symptoms, ten days from the, the date of the test. And in some cases, it might be your healthcare provider might, might recommend that you get a second test just to confirm.
Thank you so much. So, you know, recognizing we're two minutes past our time this evening, we have got a lot of great questions and, as I said, we will be following back up and communicating with all of you. The session is recorded that will be accessible for folks to, if you want to share or follow up and access the information later. And for questions, any, any questions that you have, please use our info at wildriverscf.org. Many of the panels here have shared their resources in the websites. We've shared those in the chat and we'll be following up in the post to make sure those live links are accessible. I want to say thank you, shoot shot mina with so much love and gratitude to our first responders, medical staff and healthcare workers. This is something that each and every one of you, we challenge you to take that personal responsibility and protect your family, your neighbors and your community. And each of us can do our part to stop the spread of COVID-19. Again, our condolences to our friends, family and neighbors that we have lost. As many have said tonight, each life is too much. It's too many to lose. Thank you so much. And with that, we're going to close for the evening.